All right, if I could have everyone please take their seat. I'd like to welcome everyone to the oath of office ceremony for Mayor Hazel Livingston, Councilmember Todd Lyle, Councilmember Will Allen, and Councilmember Jenny Michaels. Following the oath of office ceremony, Mayor Livingston will call the December 4th Town Council Meeting to order. But for now, I'd like to call Ms. Hazel Livingston down to be sworn in as mayor. Her oath of office will be administered by Mr. David Livingston.
I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected and that I will to the best of my ability discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States. As mayor of the town of Lexington, South Carolina, I will equally, fairly, and impartially to the best of my ability and skill exercise the trust reposed in me and I will use my best endeavors to preserve the peace and carry into effect according to law the purposes for which I have been elected. So help me God.
And I guess it's my honor now to have Mr. Todd Lyle and him to be sworn in by Representative Chris Wheaton.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected and that I will to the best of my ability discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States. As a council member of the municipality of Lexington, South Carolina, I will equally, fairly, and impartially to the best of my ability and skill exercise the trust reposed in me and I will use my best endeavors to preserve the peace and carry out into effect according to the law the purposes for which I have been elected. So help me God.
And next, we have our new council member, Will Allen, and he will be sworn in by Representative Jay Kilmartin.
I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected and that I will to the best of my ability discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States. As a council member of the municipality of Lexington, South Carolina, I will equally, fairly, and impartially to the best of my ability and skill exercise the trust reposed in me and I will use my best endeavors to preserve the peace and carry into effect according to the law the purposes for which I have been elected. So help me God.
And our other new council member, Councilmember Jenny Michaels, an oath would be administered by Mayor Randy Halfaker.
She needs a deep privilege of mine to be back at Town Hall as Councilman and as mayor to mention this on. I'm honored. Repeat after me, Chris. I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected and that I will to the best of my ability discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States. As a council member of the municipality of Lexington, South Carolina, I will equally, fairly, and impartially to the best of my ability and skill exercise the trust reposed in me and I will use my best endeavors to preserve the peace and carry into effect according to the law the purpose for which I have been elected. So help me God. Gratitude.
And at this time, I'm going to call our meeting to order, and I would like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Monday evening, December the 4th, 2023, and is being broadcast on the town's YouTube channel. I am Hazel Livingston, the mayor of the town of Lexington, and I would like to introduce my fellow council members. To my right is Councilmember Todd Carnes.
Good evening.
To his right is Councilmember Gavin Smith.
Good evening.
To his right is Councilmember Will Allen.
Good evening.
To my left is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Good evening.
And to his left is Councilmember Jenny Michaels.
Good evening.
I promise y'all we're going to make this meeting short because we do have a reception to celebrate everybody up here, even the ones that were not sworn in tonight for all they do for the community. So we're going to make this short, and this is new to me, so y'all are going to have to bear with me a little bit. At this time, I would like to ask my pastor, Kevin Thompson, to come forward and give us our invocation.
It's always my pleasure to come and to pray to bring ye before the Lord as our elected leaders here in Lexington. And as I think about how I want to pray, I thought of the example of Christ from Philippians 2, 1 through 11, so I thought I'd let the Lord speak tonight instead of me. So if there is any encouragement in Christ, any comfort from love, any participation in the Spirit, any affection and sympathy, complete my joy by being of the same mind, having the same love, being in full accord and of one mind. Do nothing from self-ambition or conceit, but in humility count others more significant than yourselves. Let each of ye look not only to his own interest, but also to the interest of others. Have this mind among yourselves which is yours in Christ Jesus, who though he was in the form of God, did not count equality with God a thing to be grasped, but impeded himself by taking the form of a servant, being born in the likeness of men, and being found in human form. He humbled himself by becoming obedient to the point of death, even death on the cross. Therefore God has highly exalted him and bestowed on him the name that is above every name, so that at the name of Jesus every knee should bow in heaven and on earth and under the earth, and every tongue confess that Jesus Christ is Lord to the glory of God the Father. You know, it is this heart of humility, it's with the eyes towards others, it's with hands of sacrificial service, and it's with a mindset of God honoring purpose that you will bless this town, and you'll serve it well. And so I want to pray towards that end. So let me pray for us. Father, we thank you this evening that we can gather together as a town, and Lord, we ask that you would just continue to bless the town of Lexington. Lord, I pray that you would give Hazel, the new mayor, the strength to walk in a manner worthy of the gospel as she leads and serves. Lord, I pray you'd give her wisdom as she makes decisions and works together and collaborates with the council and with town leaders, with the citizens. Lord, I pray that you would give clarity, that you would help us to know what the problems are to solve, what the issues are, and how to go about it wisely. Lord, I pray that you would bring great encouragement to this council, that they would find it a great joy and not a burden to serve. I pray that this council will be a blessing to our town, that they would know they are serving according to what is best for them. Lord, I pray that you would give a spirit of unity on this council, and that they would work together as one, using each of their gifts, each of their experiences, each of their passions to make our town more glorious, living, and beautiful. Lord, I pray too that you would protect them from weariness, from loneliness, from complexity, from crisis, and even in betrayal. Lord, I pray that you would give them great courage, give them a heart of gratitude, give them a depth of openness, and Lord, give them hope. We pray all this in your name because you are the only one that can do this unto us. We pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
And now, we will do the pledge, and this veteran that I'm having tonight start the pledge for us is very special to me because he happens to be my nephew, and he is retired United States Marine Corps Lieutenant Colonel Ed Holly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, I'll call the meeting to order, and our first item on the agenda is selection of mayor pro temp, so I will open the floor for nominations.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Mayor, I make a nomination of Ron Williams for mayor pro temp.
I would second that.
Is there any other nominations? If not, we'll close it out. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Thank you.
Sure. I just thank all y'all for your support and look forward to serving, to continue to serve the town for the next couple of years. I think I've got two more years for reelection time, so hopefully around after that.
Now, a report on the executive session report and ratification. Council made an executive session prior to this meeting where we discussed the following matters: contractual road maintenance contract with Lexington County 30-4-70A2, administrative support agreement, update on utility combination, which we didn't actually discuss that, we didn't do the other two, I guess, right? And no vote was taken. Do I hear a motion to ratify this report?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. See, I told you we're going to move along. Are there any additions or deletions for the agenda tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. We have several, actually six, to approve tonight. Regular council meeting for October the 2nd, 2023, special council meeting for October the 16th, 2023, work session for October the 16th, 2023, council member meeting November the 6th, 2023, special council meeting November the 20th, 2023, and work session November the 20th, 2023. Does anybody have any corrections on any of the minutes?
Mayor, I make a motion with approval submitted.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand, and that is unanimous. And now we have a presentation for a proclamation for Arbor Day, and Mr. Carnes has it.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mayor. And is this, do we have any representatives here, or is this Mr. Dan? Is this Dan in the house, Parks guy? No. All right. I will go forward. A proclamation from the mayor and council for the town of Lexington declaring December 8th, 2023 as Arbor Day in the town of Lexington, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed in the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitats for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council of the town of Lexington that Friday, December 8th, 2023, is hereby declared Arbor Day in the town of Lexington, South Carolina, and all citizens are urged to celebrate Arbor Day by supporting efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and by planting trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations dated this 4th day of December, 2023, by Hazel Livingston, Mayor.
Thank you. And I guess we don't have anybody here to take it, so.
Ms. Ann Walker.
I don't see Dan. He must be somewhere since we've got so many people here. You'll give it to him? Okay, thank you. So our next item is the vision plan update. Virginia Hilton Park construction and renovation. The crews are steadily working on the walking trails in Virginia Hilton Park. The all-inclusive playground area is virtually finished with the exception of the splash pad. Once the project is completed, there will be more trees planted than there were removed, with approximately 1,000 trees totaled in this park, which is phenomenal. The Old Mill Pond Trail is moving right along. Construction is currently being done on the two main bridges. The one-mile-long path will wrap around the pond, and the goal is to open it up in the early spring. The vision plan goal, these projects are just part of the town's overhaul vision plan. You will find a complete list of them on our website at lexsc.com. Now we'll have a traffic update from Mayor Pro Tim Williams.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. We anticipate traffic volumes will increase around town during the holiday season. Please utilize extra caution. I promise you, the police department's not trying to see how many wrecks we can have. Utility relocation work continues at the intersection of Thompson Street and Hendrick Street. SC DOT continues to make traffic changes at US 1 and I-20. Expect periodic delays and possible closures over the coming weeks. The next traffic committee meeting is scheduled for January 10th at 8:00 a.m. We encourage you to follow the Lexington Police Department Facebook page and the town's social media pages for traffic alerts and updates. Please call 803-358-7273 to report any traffic signal issues, unsafe roadway conditions, or just a pothole that needs to be repaired. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're moving to public hearings. We have three. Speakers are limited to five minutes. If we have any here, holler at me. Final reading of an ordinance annex in Lexington County Tax Map Number 5596-04-007 located at 300 Alliance Road. Final reading of an ordinance annex in Lexington County Tax Map Number 4332-02-005 located at the 100 block of Smith Street. And final reading of an ordinance for a budget adjustment. Does anybody wish to speak to any of these? If not, we're going to move on, and our first one will be final reading of an ordinance annex in Lexington County Tax Map Number 5596-04-07 located at 300 Alliance Road. Mayor Pro Tim Williams.
Thank you, ma'am. Gethsemane Anabaptist Church owns approximately 15.4 acres located at 300 Alliance Road and has petitioned to annex the property. The church is planning to expand on the property. Properties in town near this one are zoned industrial. Meat Plant Road is classified as a local road. The planning commissioner reviewed this annexation during their October meeting and recommended general commercial zoning for the parcel and local road classification for Meat Plant Road. I'll make a motion for final reading approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and it's unanimous. Our second old business item is final reading of an ordinance annex in Lexington County Tax Map Number 4332-02-005 located in the 100 block of Smith Street, and this is Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, excuse me, Ms. Mayor.
We need to work on that.
Have it, have it, have it. So Grant Brooker owns approximately .67 acres located in the 100 block of Smith Street and has petitioned to annex the property. Properties in town near this one are zone-protected residential, and Smith Street is classified as RL4 Road under the county. The planning commissioner reviewed this annexation during their October meeting and recommended the same zoning and same road classification for this parcel. So, Ms. Mayor, I would make a final reading, a motion for final reading approval of the same.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. That is done. See, I told you we were going to hurry. Last old business item is final reading of an ordinance for a budget adjustment, and Councilmember Gavin Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a long one, so bear with me. During the October work session, Chief Green presented the need for a budget amendment to purchase body armor vests to replace vests that will be expiring in the current year. These vests were not approved from the Body Armor Assistance Grant and were not included in the budget for a total of $6,000. Staff has determined that money is available in wages and benefits for the police department due to vacant positions during the first part of the fiscal year. In reviewing other departments, staff has determined that other budget adjustments are needed. The air conditioner unit in the server room failed. It cannot be repaired and must be replaced. Planning, building, and technology needs $14,000 to replace the unit. Interest income is coming in higher than anticipated, so increasing this appropriation would cover the cost of replacing the unit. The air conditioner unit in the Parks Building also failed. Again, the unit could not be repaired and had to be replaced. The Parks Department would like to move $7,000 from their repairs accounts to capital outlay. The Utilities Department is severely short-staffed and would like to contract with our repairs and maintenance vendor for the AMI systems to complete the installation of water meters to bring all town water meters on the AMI system. There are sufficient funds available in wages and benefits due to the vacancies that would cover this expenditure. Therefore, the following budget adjustment is requested. Funding sources are: reduce police wages and benefits by $6,000, reduce utility wages and benefits by $72,000, reduce parks repairs and maintenance by $7,000, and add interest income for $14,000, bringing the total funding sources to $99,000. Uses: police capital outlay five vests for $6,000, planning budget and technology capital outlay AC unit for $14,000, parks capital outlay AC unit for $7,000, utilities CIP AMI meter installations of $72,000, bringing the total uses to $99,000, and a net total of $0. Madam Mayor, I move for final reading approval.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Now we'll move into new business. Our first item is first reading of an ordinance to amend the impact fee ordinance. Councilmember Will Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The town's impact fee ordinance has been in effect since February 1st, 2020. Two specific clarifications would ensure the intent and objective of the ordinance is consistently applied. The recommendation is to amend Section 9.11 Special Cases to provide for the following. Number one, any change of use to an existing structure that is intended and reasonably expected to last for less than 366 days should be considered temporary and not subject to impact fees, since the use will not increase demand for applicable municipal services due to the temporary nature of the change. Should the temporary nature of the change extend beyond 366 days, impact fees will be fully assessed in accordance with the ordinance. Number two, structures which were unoccupied as of the implementation date of the ordinance shall be given credit for the most recent use or highest use that can be established which occurred prior to the implementation date. Madam Mayor, I move for this to be the first reading of an ordinance to amend the impact fee ordinance.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Todd, I think you recommended this, didn't you?
Yes, I did.
Appreciate it. Great job. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and it's unanimous. And our last item on the agenda is first reading of an ordinance annex in Lexington County Tax Map Number 5596-01-016 located at 5079 Augusta Road. Councilmember Jenny Michaels.
5079 Augusta Road LLC owns 4.6 acres located at the address and has petitioned to annex the property. A single-family home is being converted to office space and is located on the site. Properties in the town near this are zone industrial and general commercial. Augusta Road is classified as an arterial road. The planning commission reviewed this annexation during the November meeting and recommended general commercial zoning for the parcel and arterial road classification for Augusta Road. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. At this time, we will do announcements from Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The town Lexington Snowball Festival was a big success, even The Town of Lexington Snowball Festival was a big success even though we had some weather delays and changes. We have rescheduled the carnival to December 16th from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and the movies are rescheduled to December 21st at 6:00 p.m. for The Grinch, and December 22nd at 6:00 p.m. for The Santa Claus, presumably the first one. Tree lighting at Willie B. Character Park will be this Thursday, December the 7th, at 6:00 o'clock at 804 Hendrick Street. This is a great neighborhood event, and everyone is invited to attend. Kids will receive a gift bag and a light dinner. As mentioned, please come out to the Palmetto Collegiate Institute this Friday, December the 8th, at 2:00 p.m. for the annual planting of a tree for Arbor Day. It's also a very beautiful building if you haven't seen it. The Board of Zoning will meet on December the 14th at 5:30 p.m. here in the council chambers. Town Hall will be closed on December 25th and 26th in observation of Christmas, and council will not meet again until Tuesday, January the 2nd, 2024, at 6:30 here in the council chambers. I'd like to thank you all for tuning in tonight for the Lexington Town Council Meeting, and we wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
And at this time, does the news media have any questions? Does the public have any comments or questions?
Oh, that's right. Gavin does. I forgot. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just two quick announcements. I'll host my last Open Door After Four meeting this Thursday, December the 7th. Just wanted to say thank you to everyone that's come out this year to bring up important topics that are important to them, how I can help you, how this council can help you. I'm here this Thursday for the last one of the year from 4:00 until 6:00 p.m. And then lastly, just thank you to the council. We've been putting together the application for our new Small Business Advisory Committee, and that application is nearly ready. If you're interested in joining the committee, please reach out to a fellow council member, reach out to me, reach out to any of these council members, and they have that application. We'll also be doing some outreach to business owners in the community and hope to get that committee stood up for business in the new year. With that, I'll yield back to you.
Thank you. So at this time, I am going to conclude the meeting, and we'd like to ask y'all to join us in the conference center for a reception for everybody. So that concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the Town Council Meeting for the Town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall on Monday evening, December the 4th, 2023. A recording of this meeting will be available for viewing on the town's YouTube channel. Without objection, we are adjourned.